Call the meeting to order. Stand for the salute to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, individual liberty, justice, and. Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Mr. Dillon?
Here.
Ms. Dougherty?
Here.
Ms. Delay?
Here.
Mayor Lahey?
Here.
Seven present.
Special order of business, appointment of Director of Special Education. Dr., sorry, Dr. Boyd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Committee members, I'm pleased to introduce you to my recommendation for our candidate as Director of Special Education in Lowell Public Schools. Dr. Francisco Vicente is here with us tonight. Dr. Hall will share with you a brief bio. The rest of Dr. Vicente's materials are within your packet, and Dr. Vicente is here to answer any questions that the committee may have. My recommendation is appointment as written. Dr. Hall?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Boyd. Members of the committee, Dr. Vicente is a current Lowell Public Schools employee. He's a 22-year veteran special educator with 16 years of service with Lowell Public Schools. He's held a variety of roles in special education. He began his public school career as a paraprofessional before transitioning to the role of special education teacher. He served at Lowell High School as a substantially separate classroom teacher in an adjustment program. He has held the roles of evaluation team chairperson, coordinator of the Laura Lee Therapeutic Day School, assistant principal at the Abraham Lincoln Elementary School, and most recently he served as the interim director of special education. He completed his doctorate in educational leadership at the University of Massachusetts Lowell with a focus on free and appropriate public education for students with disabilities. Dr. Vicente prides himself in his roots as a teacher, taking a student-centered approach to teaching and learning while working to engage families and community on behalf of all of the students of Lowell. He looks forward to the opportunity to serve Lowell Public Schools in the role of Director of Special Education, subject to your appointment. I'd like to present Dr. Vicente to the school committee.
Can anybody hear me?
Yep, there we go.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Francisco Vicente. I go by Frank. Thank you to all the members of the committee, Dr. Boyd. I'm thrilled for the opportunity. I look very much forward to continuing to serve the community, and I'm just very, very grateful for everything that Lowell has done for me. I'm very proud to be part of the Lowell Public Schools. Thank you.
If you could hold on, Dr. Vicente.
Sure.
Members of the committee, do you have any questions for Dr. Vicente or comments?
Thank you.
Mr. Dakota?
Just to say, a great choice, and I think you're going to be just perfect for us in the city. Our special ed teachers, staff, and students are going to be the beneficiaries of this appointment.
Thank you.
Ms. Garnett?
Thank you and welcome. I wanted to ask you, I think you've got a breadth of experience in the Lowell Public Schools that I think will serve you very well in this role, and I wanted to know your thoughts about what do you see as being the challenges for you in this new role as Director of Special Education, as someone who's worked through the system many times, one-on-one, with our most needy students? What do you see as being the real challenge for you ahead in this new role?
Sure, thank you. So, I mean, first and foremost, this is a very large district. We're talking about, you know, 15,000 students. We're talking about nearly 2,600 students with disabilities. So, it's my intention, in my first year in particular, and what I've worked towards this summer is just to gain a really solid understanding of what the pulse is on the ground in each one of the buildings. I've been working on scheduling out meetings with every principal in the next couple of weeks, just to speak directly to them and really come to understand what's happening for them in their building and where their needs are. I think it's going to be really important for me to dedicate the time and the effort to make sure that I have a real solid understanding of everything that's happening in all of our schools. We're coming off a difficult time. COVID's been a challenge for everybody, and so it's going to be about making sure that we're building out programming and opportunities to make sure that our students and our staff stay on a forward trajectory all the time. That's the work ahead for me, but what's going to be most important for me to get there is to really be able to work cohesively with everybody, just have a true understanding of what's happening in each and every building.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you, that was an excellent answer. And I know in special education, I happen to work with disabled children from other communities, and I know that there's always, for districts, there's always that balancing between costs and funding and the needs of the student.
Sure.
And you see some of our districts are wealthier, I mean, I'm seeing it in my job, my day job. Wealthier communities are able to provide a lot of those, let's say, compensatory services like occupational therapy, physical therapy, things like that, supports to families, where the urban or poorer districts struggle with that. So, I'm wondering, what's your philosophy in finding that balance between funding and resources and meeting the needs of our special education students?
Sure. So, I want to start off by just giving some basic information about the work that I've done so far and understanding the needs. So, we're at roughly 77% of our kids are classified as high needs. We have 63% of our kids that are economically disadvantaged. We've got 468 kids in substantially separate programs, and we have 210 kids right now that are placed outside of, out of our district. They're being serviced in specialized programs. So, being mindful of all of those things, what's going to be really important for me is that I work with our staff to gain a full understanding of FAP. So, I've had conversations with Dr. Boyd where he's referenced that public education is a fundamental civil right for students with disabilities. And my belief to take that a step further is that FAP, Free and Appropriate Public Education, is the fundamental civil right of students with disabilities. And what often gets left out of the narrative regarding FAP and the least restrictive environment is that it comes with a legal conference of benefit. So, what that means is that the law clearly states that when we make decisions for students with disabilities, we have to be able to demonstrate a capacity for academic and functional benefit. So, when I'm working with teams now, and, you know, we're problem-solving through cases, my question to them is, what's the conference of benefit? And what data do you have to demonstrate that we're seeing the benefit? And so, as we're working through our cases and as we're working with our students, I'm asking that question, and I'm asking them to ask that question, to understand and really think about, are we doing best by our kids? These students that we're currently have in more, you know, are substantially separate programs out of district, is their capacity to bring some of them back? What sort of mechanisms do we have for there? And just being really thoughtful and having a really firm understanding of how we design our programming, what's owed to our students, and how do we build out programming that's going to support the schools? I really see my role as building and facilitating sustainable programs in support of the schools so that they're in the best position possible to service all of our students.
Thank you. Everyone else all set? All right, so I need a motion to appoint by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Dillon. Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
I'll ask the clerk. Do we have to say the name or just yes?
No, I'll read that it's a, the vote is to appoint Dr. Vicente as the Special Education Director. Ms. Martin? Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Mayor Lahey?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Welcome officially to your new role, Frank. Committee members, he does prefer Frank to Dr. Vicente, but for official purposes, Dr. Vicente, it's a pleasure and an honor to have you serve as our Director of Special Education. Thank you for accepting this role. We look forward to big things happening for our children.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, minutes. Motion to approve the regular scheduled and special meeting minutes of Lowell School Committee, August 25th, August 30th, September 1st, and place them on file. The motion by Mr. Dillon, seconded by Mr. Dakota. All in favor, say aye. Permission to enter, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. The permissions to enter for this meeting are within your packet. The recommendations of approval as written. Staffs available if there are any questions.
Any questions? Move to approve, do you have a question? Mr. Dillon?
No.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I just wanted to comment on the bike connector program. Seems like an excellent program, teaching kids about how to refurbish and tune up their bikes. Is that a, that's a local company, huh, right on Lee Street that's doing that? Could you just touch on how that came about or what it, you know, what the program entails?
Ms. Turner?
Superintendent?
Ms. Turner?
Yeah, you need a microphone. He asked Ms. Turner to explain how it came about, I guess. Or Ms. Desmond.
Feel free, Ms. Desmond, thank you.
Thank you. This program is part of our after-school program and our summer school program, and so we can, we contract with this company to provide at certain summer sites and also after-school sites, the opportunity for students to learn how to rebuild and refurbish bikes.
Great, so it's going to be offered after school?
Yes.
This year?
And we've had this program in our district through our 21st Century program for several years now. It's very successful.
Excellent. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Clark. Roll call.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Delay?
Yes.
Mayor Lahey?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Next, we have memorials. We have two memorials tonight, one for Roger Dumont, brother-in-law of UTL, Director of Operations, Mickey Dumont, and two, like to have a moment of silence, for Johanna Rosario Pachado, the Marine killed in Afghanistan from Lawrence, Mass. Next, we have motions. First motion of the night by Jackie Dougherty. Request superintendent provide a transportation report that updates the committee on services and issues facing the department compared to the 2019-2020 school year. The report should include current challenges, current challenges in general, before or after school, special education transportation, as well as key factors affecting the ability and the efficiency to meet our students' transportation needs. Seconded by Ms. Martin, Ms. Dougherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm basically looking for this information. I think that some of us, we know there are certain challenges that we're facing now around staffing for drivers, routes being changed, after-school programs being diminished due to staffing issues. I mean, there's a lot that is new, and there's a lot that have been old challenges that we've been struggling with for a while, and I, my intention is to get some information out of the Transportation Department. I think that in, that a lot of this information is right at the forefront for them. They're dealing with this every day. As we know, we've had parents reaching out to us about transportation issues, and I think that this would be a good way for us as a committee to get a handle on what are the challenges that are being faced, and if there are some potential solutions we can come up with together, looking at maybe changing zones, a lot of things that really we need to be looking at again as we continue to face the challenges around transportation.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Clark?
I'm just curious about the time and effort of this request. I mean, I think we know not only state, well, the state just announced the National Guard is coming in to help Lowell Public Schools, as well as many other districts across the state that are struggling in this area, but it's a national issue. So, what I worried about is that we're aware there's an issue. I'm wondering if perhaps the information about where the gaps the National Guard is going to help us with might serve to respond to this issue, because I, I'm worried that we are creating more work in this request that may be taking someone away from doing the work that we need them to do. So, I'm wondering if we, if there could perhaps be a modification to better understand maybe where we're going to be deploying the National Guard folks. I think we, I think there was a report, there's approximately 17 folks that are going to be coming to help our district. Perhaps we could understand where they're going to be helping us, and that might serve to respond to, I think, what Ms. Dougherty is after, without creating additional work for someone to be moving away from, in fact, helping to continue to resolve some of these issues. And I don't know if that would be amenable to Ms. Dougherty, but I am wanting to ask the question, so, thank you.
All right. Ms. Dougherty, and then.
You know what, Mr. Dillon has his hand up, he's fine.
Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there anybody prepared, maybe Dr. Boyd or whoever it be, to answer a little bit of, you know, best of your knowledge right now, some of these questions, but also to touch on the National Guard and where they may have an influence or help us? And I know, I know you're not prepared, but.
Can I just make a suggestion that we wait for the report? It just seems like we're, and I don't want to speak for you either, but it's just, I know there's, the, if we call for a bus for after-school sports, they cancel that day. So, that's what the report's asking for, is just, what are we facing? It's not an in-depth report, it's just, these are the challenges, this is how we're going to attack it and go forward. So, it's kind of a simple request. It's just, you know, what are we doing and where are we working on? Mr. Dakota does this every day, I was on the phone with him for five minutes before the meeting.
He's fine.
He can respond quickly. I just, it's just, it's just so we have a report on what, you know, what the athletic director's telling us, how we're going to use the National Guard, and, you know, it's not a crazy report.
I know, I wasn't even necessarily against it, I just, the.
Yeah, no, I know.
That information would be nice if we already have it, like, sitting right here.
Yeah, I just, we'll get the report from Mr. Dakota, because he has it on his fingertips, and he'll tell us how he's implementing everything, so.
All right, so we won't talk about it.
Miss, yeah, Mr. Dillon.
Thank you. I'd just like to add, I know my colleague is always concerned about the work in getting us information, but we can't do the job of making progress without the information. And I also spoke with the Transportation Director, and as Dr. Boyd knows, if there's any concern about clarification of what I'm looking for, for information, they can always reach out to me. I'm not trying to create work, I'm trying to identify what are the issues, not just the drivers. The drivers are one issue, but what are the other issues that we maybe can help with? And we don't know that if we don't have the information. Hmm.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next motion of the night is by Ms. Dougherty. Request superintendent provide the committee with a report on the Family Resource Center that compares current staffing levels with the 20, with the 2019-2020 school year. The report should include an organizational chart that identifies titles and numbers of staff in each role, along with the lines of authority. How many are answering phones, responding to walk-ins, returning emails, other aspects of customer service? What is the onboarding process of new staff, and what ongoing professional development is being offered? In addition to the report, the report should include how many lotteries are being held and when, and how, compares to two years ago, as well as the updated placement, issues, challenges for the current school year. Seconded by Ms. Martin, Ms. Dougherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have gone into very specifics about what I'm looking for in this report, and again, it's based on trying to understand why we still have issues with customer service for our parents and families. And I'm looking at understanding that we've increased staffing, maybe it has to do with the training, maybe we need to have more training. And the reason, both with this report and the transportation report, I wanted to do a comparison between what happened prior to the pandemic. In other words, what were the staffing models before we got into this crazy time that we're been in? In order to really try to dig down and see what are ways that we can improve our services at the Family Resource Center? What are some of the bottlenecks? Is it technology? Is it professional development? We really, without having that information in front of us, we can't start to work at doing a better job. And I think that, you know, although I don't have statistics, I asked at one of our reopening school meetings. about how number, how many parents still did not have placement, we have not been tracking that. That might be an area we want to look at too. In order to evaluate our quality control, our customer service, we need to be looking at how we're providing those services. So, um, I really see it as an opportunity for us to see the growth and the investment we put in family resources and see where we can really get a better bang for our buck in that area.
Mr. Dillon?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yeah, I think there's no doubt that we need to look into, um, what is going on at our Family Resource Center. I guess, um, my request would be, could we invite Rebecca Duda, um, to the meeting when we're discussing, um, all this stuff? Or, you know, I mean, anybody else who, um, might be helpful at answering some questions? Because it, it is important that we increase the efficiency down there, so that would be excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Clark?
Thank you. I'm going to ask the question again, uh, how much time and effort is going to be used to collect a information request that asks for human resources data, policy data, historical data, and also a school assignment data in, in one? And then also, um, I believe, I think just to comment on something Ms. Doherty just said, we, as a committee, put on hold a position, an ombuds, bilingual ombudsperson, uh, that we did not approve in this budget cycle, that I believe was intended to sit within the Family Resource Center to, to assist with, uh, family needs and requests. And, and we did not approve that, uh, for this coming year. So while I appreciate wanting to better understand what the customer service needs and issues are, we in fact have bottlenecked that office by, um, by not choosing to approve a position that I think was recommended from the Family Resource Center and, um, Ms. Duda herself, or Dr. Duda herself. Um, and so I would just like to raise that again to the committee to say, um, I think we need to be aware of where we are perhaps getting in the way of some improvement, so, thank you. So if anyone has an idea of how much time and effort and approximate, I would appreciate, um, you know, how lo, how long this will take to put together, because I think it's a lot of data that we're asking for here.
Yep, okay, thank you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I, I think I'd pose a question through the chair to, to my colleague if they could offer a grade of the performance of the, the Family Resource Center.
One more time, I'm sorry.
Uh, asking if, if Ms. Clark could share with us her grade for the efficiency and effectiveness of the Family Resource Center.
All right. I don't really want to get into a bag-
I'm not trying to be a jerk, but I, I mean, I honestly, I don't see how, how we can make informed decisions if we don't have the information about how it's performing. I mean, I'm only getting one side of the story from parents who call me to complain. So, and I freely will say, that's what I'm hearing. I don't hear from the parents who had no problems. They're not the ones who call and say everything's great. So I think for us to make realistic, rational decisions, we need to get this information from the professionals, uh, who are charged with running this center that is the key kind of interaction point for parents as they're entering or making changes here in the district. I don't think we should have to apologize for asking for valid, professionally provided information. I don't feel I have all the information I say. If someone asked me what I give as a grade for the Family Resource Center, I couldn't tell you. I, and if I did, it would only be based on the complaints that I've heard. So here's the opportunity for the administration to show us a fuller, more comprehensive picture so we're better informed so that we can make the decisions moving forward that best serve our parents and our community.
Thank you, and I agree, it's getting a lot of calls. Anybody else?
Can I just also point out though, I think, I had a conversation this week with a parent who asked about the Family Resource Center, they were looking for a, a answer to a question. My understanding is the Family Resource Center is really responsible for, um, school assignment and, and things related to, um, enrollment, uh, GPA, things like that. And I'm not saying that's the only thing that they do, but Family Resource Center to me, and I think to many other parents, is almost like a catch-all for, I have questions about school. Uh, and I don't, I'm, my guess, my concern is, and I'm not saying there's not valuable information to gain here, but we, I believe, had a recommendation from the department themselves saying, "We believe we can do a better job by adding this position," and we, as a committee, said, "We don't think that's a good idea." And then that's where I say, I think that we need, while I'm hearing, yes, I hear complaints from families too, I think taking the advice of someone who's working in the role and says, "I think that this would serve our community well by adding this position," we need to be taking that information and saying, "Huh, well, if, these are the people who are working with them day, day in, day out, maybe there's something to it." And not being, getting in the way of providing additional services to our families. That's, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Doherty?
Uh, thank you. I'd just like to respond to that because I think that we have, um, just in my own recollection, I think we've more than tripled the staff over there. So we have responded to the needs, and I don't see, just from my observations with the community, that we've made much progress for that. So if we had four and now we have twelve, I mean, I don't know that, we'd have to see the report. So certainly when we get the report that talks about what was the staffing in 2019, what is it now? Why do we have a retired administrator over there now? What, you know, we can get a fuller picture. Without that information, to just take, we need another person when we've already sent a lot of people over there? I, I think it's, um, it would be negligent on us to not get that information. They should be able to provide the report because they're doing the work every day, just like the Transportation Department.
Right, but the position that was suggested was not a position that exists currently. It was a new position that was meant to serve needs that are not necessarily being served well. And I agree, I'm getting the same calls and information. I just am saying, I think when we are asking about or talking about bottlenecks, we are perhaps a bottleneck.
But you're, we have added staff, so they want an additional staff person. Let's get a report about how they're using the staff they have, that's all, just a report.
Did you have a question, Mr. Lay?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Well, um, when I read this motion, it reminds me of when, the time when I worked in a private firm. And, uh, one day, uh, the management decided to, uh, ask everybody to, uh, write a report, what they do, uh, from the time they walk in and, uh, the time they leave. And, uh, uh, we ended up spending hours each day just to try to figure out what we have done and, and, and put on the report. So it was, for me, it feels like that was a lot of ti, uh, uh, effort being put just to, to do what we do every day. Uh, but, um, I'm not, if, if that's what Ms. Doherty wants, uh, that's, that's all right, uh, it's okay with me. Uh, but, um, but what she was saying, she said is that, um, it had not been that much improvement. What do you mean by that? Uh, what, what did you hear? And I'm curious why the Family Resource Center with all, with everything going on in the, in the school department. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Dillon, you have a question?
Um, I, it might have just been more looking to get this over with. I mean, let, let's just move on and get the report because this is ridiculous. We're, we're talking about a position here and arguing back and forth, I don't-
Okay, thank you.
I, I don't need it.
Yep, Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do, do we want to put some kind of timeline as to when, when you would want this report completed by? Or even a, maybe a, a rough draft of it perhaps, by, what, Thanksgiving? I don't know that we, all that information could be accumulated in, like, in a few weeks.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't know. I, I would think it'd be reasonable to get this within a month, so. Mr. Dillon?
Uh, thank you. Do we, I mean, do we have any plans? Is this going to, do we have plans on making changes?
Well, changes can come from the report, so.
Okay. Um, I don't know, I, just the timing, I don't get. It's like-
Well, it's the big end that you can't-
We, we just did, I mean, we just did a lot of this stuff about talking about what goes on in there and what changes are going to be made. If we want to have big- All right.
Okay, so why don't we just-
So, thank you.
Okay. Um, all in favor of the motion? If you don't want to vote for it, don't vote for it. All in favor of the motion? All right, do a roll call.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Clark?
No.
Mr. Dakota?
I'm sorry, has there been a timeline issued on this? Not, nothing?
Within a month.
Within a month.
Yeah.
Within a month.
A month?
Within the month, yeah. Two meetings. It's just general stuff, I mean, you know, we're just trying to make sure that it's running efficiently, we're going to get the opinions of people, it shouldn't be all that difficult to get there.
But, Mr. Mayor, that's a very long list of things. Um, and, and we know that we're at a, a juncture here that we're, we're trying to resolve our transportation issue, we're trying to resolve all of the placement issues that, that have happened over the course of these next cu, these past couple of weeks. And I'm, I'm sure they're all scrambling to try to resolve all of those issues-
I know, but that might be part of the whole problem is, I'm, I don't want to get into it, but I mean, people, there's a shift in, in, in work assignments and this and that, and so if we just get the report, it'll tell us what we're doing down there, so. So why don't we continue with the roll call, just yes or no?
Mr. Dakota?
I, I, I'm gonna have to say no.
Okay.
Mr. Dillon?
No.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
No.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Three ayes, four nays, motion fails.
Okay.
If I could, uh, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I do think, I think it's a worthy discussion, but I also think that the challenge of time is, especially as we're expecting right now and we don't have the data even yet on the Afghan refugee families that are going to be coming to the district. Uh, we have not added staff there, so it is important to have that discussion. I'm not sure what that perception is. We do send down significant staff when there are bottlenecking. Uh, Ms. Phillips, for instance, has been allocating significant time there just simply to answering phones. She's not staffed in the Family Resource Center. Ms. Palazzo does the same. Uh, we have not added staff, but this position that we did suggest, that's, that is currently tabled, so if the committee's amenable to it, uh, I do believe we have a, a subcommittee that would be pertinent to this discussion. We could also discuss the position, the committee could get the information. I can work with, uh, Ms. Duda and Ms. Phillips to find timing that won't conflict with the workflow. If that's something that's amenable to the committee to make a motion around a subcommittee to discuss this, perhaps we can solve the information, because it is a valuable discussion, but the time is also a concern.
All right, and can I just, we're going to move on from this, but I think, um, you know, that's part of our concern. If Ms. Phillips is down there answering phones, she's not doing her job. So she shouldn't be down there answering phones. She, someone else should be, unless she's solving problems as she's answering phones, but I think that's part of the whole concern too, so.
And I think that's the position that was, uh, supposed to be answering phones down there that was tabled, that was recommended. So there is opportunity to talk again about that position, to talk about the data. I also think that it would be pertinent for the committee to understand, as we get data on the Afghan refugees that we know are coming to Lowell, to understand how we supported them. So there's a number of issues that I do think are valuable to the committee. Uh, I don't schedule subcommittee meetings, but if the committee is open to that motion, I think we can solve all of these things, uh, in terms of information. Certainly, these are complex challenges we won't solve at a subcommittee, but the information we can provide via a discussion, uh, that we can make Ms. Duda available.
Okay, thank you. I know, but we already all spoke on it, so we're going to move on. So reports of superintendent, improve, uh, improvement school facilities throughout the elementary and secondary school. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This one, again, is timely, it's important, uh, by virtue of our ESER application. The committee has allocated funds to facilities. However, allocating funds in a general line item for facilities has not, uh, been found to be acceptable by, uh, the approving body. They want specifics around each project and even perhaps further in order to approve the district's grant application. So by virtue of that request, uh, from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, we think it would be prudent for the committee to accelerate its timeline and decision-making. We cannot get access to the ESER funds in the second grant application, ESER III, until we go through this process and make sure that we can delineate the funds that are currently earmarked approximately fifteen million dollars for facility needs. Uh, Dr. Hall is recommending a subcommittee meeting by the end of the month in order to start prioritizing this, which would allow him to continue the collaboration with the city, come to you with some prioritized recommendations, hear from the committee and allow you to approve the allocation specifics in the October timeframe.
Any que, Mr. Dakota, Mr. Dillon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, while we're talking about sending, um, so much stuff to subcommittee, uh, I'd like to bring up that, have we, have we, um, done a final analysis on it? Are our subcommittees set right now? Like, is Mr. Lay, um, well represented on our subcommittees?
He doesn't have any assignments yet, but it's, we're putting that together and it'll be on for the next meeting.
Uh, because there's a giant disparity on representation on the subcommittees. I mean, e- e- especially with Mr. Lay being on none. I mean, it's like, it's been a long time now. And the numbers, as they stand anyway, uh, I, I myself am significantly underrepresented on subcommittees. So, uh, can we, can we get that finalized or sometime, I mean, we have a lot of, we're sending a lot of stuff to the subcommittee.
Yeah, I'll have that next week, but I mean, I basically was going to place Mr. Lay on some subcommittees or wasn't going to move everybody else around.
Okay. Um, all right, well, I have, I mean, I have the numbers here that, you know, lay out exactly how many subcommittees people are a part of and how many they're the chair of. And, uh, you know, I'm significantly underrepresented there. And Mr. Lay has, you know, zero subcommittee assignments, uh, and-
All right, I'll take a look at it this week and just give me a call and we'll see what we can do about it.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay. Any questions on the report? All right, so.
We would need a motion for the subcommittee. This is of the, uh, it's, it's of a priority in terms of timing.
All right, so motion is scheduled by Mr. Dillon, seconded by Ms. Clark to schedule a subcommittee, uh, facility subcommittee report within the next two weeks, you were saying, or next week?
Mayor?
Yep, Ms. Doherty?
Um, through to Dr. Boyd, are you looking to do a joint meeting with, uh, the city? Uh, the city's, uh, facility subcommittee and the school committees? I mean, I think that was helpful in the past.
I would leave that to the discretion of the body. This is of timing essence in terms of your application, which is your approval for the, uh, state. It does require collaboration with the city, which, uh, Dr. Hall is engaged in. However, I, I would leave that to the committee's discretion. Sometimes scheduling the joint, uh, takes a little bit more time, and I'm hopeful that you can come to a, an agreement in terms of the vote, uh, in October so that we can get this application across. So I would just leave that there in terms of data.
So maybe when, Dr. Hall, will you be polling or will you have the superte, maybe if we could poll the city, see if we could come up with a night that works for both bodies? I think it, it is highly effective to meet with them and to hear, you know, where their priorities are and they can hear our priorities and to do it, uh, in a collaborative way since it is critical, you know, to get the funding and move forward.
Thank you. Mr. Dillon?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to make sure that we have, um, our, our own ideas in mind going into that meeting. Um, there is such thing as, you know, too many cooks in the kitchen when you're just throwing ideas around out there. So I wouldn't mind meeting first, um, if we can even, if we can do that. Um, maybe have our facility subcommittee meet prior. Um, because if we all just show up together, I, I understand the value of meeting with the city also, you know, with the city council, but it gets, gets difficult, I don't know.
I think the, the suggestions should come out of the administration, then we'll look at them and you can, we can add what we want and then we can meet with the city, yep. So we'll get the information, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep. Mr. Hall? Okay, any other questions on this report? Yep, Ms. Clark?
Sorry, this is going back to, I know, the last motion, but I don't think anyone made a motion, but I'd be willing to, to send the, um, some of the Family Resource Center discussion to the, um, subcommittee, the Human Resources Labor Relations, and to bring potentially back that position, as well as Ms. Duda, if she was available to come talk to us about some of the details. I don't, if that was, I don't think we just went by that. We didn't actually send it to subcommittee, so I would make that motion.
So Ms. Dougherty, would you want to send that to a subcommittee? Would you want to send your motion idea to a subcommittee for discussion?
I, I believe Ms. Clark is talking about looking at the ombudsman position that the administration had recommended that we put in the suspense account? Is that what you wanted to look at?
Well, it would entail that position and.
Right, because I'm not, I'm not interested in adding any more positions to the Family Resource Center until we have a report about how they're functioning and what needs they might have. And I think in terms of the timing, I think the timing is right, because I've been hearing from people, September 8th,
Okay.
still waiting for their kid to be assigned. That was a week after school started. So I think we have real issues that are urgent and need to be addressed, and I think it's in concert with looking at what transportation is struggling with, because although they are physically together, they are working as separate entities, so I'm not in favor of adding any more positions until we get that report.
I think we're all set for right now, and we'll discuss it. Mr. Dillon?
Nope.
Okay. All right. Motion to accept the report from the superintendent as a report of progress by, just to re- accept his report by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Ms. Martin. Home education. Any questions on home education? Dr. Boyd?
Uh, the report is submitted to the committee. Ms. Desmond's available if there are any questions.
Any questions on the report? Motion to accept by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Mr. Dillon. Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Seven As approved.
All right, new business, consideration of increased hourly wages cafeteria workers. Dr. Boyd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, again, is in reference to the nationwide shortages we've seen in staffing in certain areas. We had a discussion about buses and partnering with the governor's office around accessing the National Guard to cover some of those shortages while we build that pipeline. Here is a recommendation to increase hourly wages for our cafeteria staff to build up our staffing within that area. Dr. Hall, could you share more details? The recommendation is approval as written. Dr. Hall has spent some time on analysis to bring this recommendation to the committee. Dr. Hall?
I also would like to point out, due to the committee's innovation and working with the UTL, millions of meals have been produced through fam- for families throughout Lowell during the pandemic. So not only has there been a, you know, nationwide shortage for such workers, our production has gone up tremendously and done a great service for the community in providing those community-wide meals and addressing this over the last 18 months. As you all know, the committee's addressed different incentives for compensation to have people work on holidays or through school vacations to provide those community meals. So I did want to provide some backdrop for the public that these cafeteria workers and cooks have been very flexible, have worked extremely long hours, and there's been great benefit due to the committee's willingness to address these alternative work schedules, the demand for increased hours, and the like, and that, this flows out of that. We've identified, and I'm sure many of you have seen, many of the companies driving down Rogers Street, for example, like Chelmsford Street are advertising for anywhere from $14.75 to $16 an hour to work in fast food restaurants. We're competing with that, and a lot of people have come off the federal unemployment benefit and are currently seeking jobs, so we're in a market where we're competing with these private companies who have sign-on bonuses and other advertising campaigns. So in addressing this with the UTL and with Ms. Gannon, who's the labor representative for the cafeteria, we believe that this addition, and a lot of these cafeteria workers are making $5.20 an hour, as you can see from the memo, so this would increase despite what the collective bargaining agreement says, to $17 an hour. And while we're still in negotiations, that, for the short term, will benefit us in recruiting more workers so we can continue the community-wide meals and also work to get full cafeteria-style hot meals within all of our schools. So that's the background and the purpose of this request to the committee.
Any questions? Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm gonna fully support this. I think it is absolutely the right way to go. I believe our, our cooks have been the unsung heroes. They're working understaffed, so we, you know, we're seeing that staffing issue across multiple levels in the district and, as is mentioned earlier, across the country. I'm, I'm also hearing a lot of concerns about the quality of the food. I don't know if you all got the email that I got from the website where, you know, I, and I don't know, maybe someone can correct me, but this person said it's a $49 million contract with Aramac, and then I saw a picture of a moldy sandwich that was served to the high school. So I don't know what we need to do. We've talked about this on the floor. We've recommended surveys, things like that, but we need to improve the quality of the food for our, our children, and, and when you're hearing from the cooks, the staffs, the staff whose job it is to feed our, our children, how concerned they are that the quality has gone down, I really think we need to take another look at that. But I am definitely supporting this, and I would make a motion to support that. Thank you.
Mr. Dillon?
Approve. Second.
Motion by Ms. Dougherty to approve, seconded by Mr. Dillon. Any other questions? Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Seven As approved.
Andy, we should leave for this one, and do you have a question?
Yeah. Thank you. Could we possibly, since we've just talked about Aramac's and the quality of the food or the lack thereof, can we have a representative from Aramac come to our next school committee meeting so that we can have a conversation about this, particularly, because I'm, I, I agree with Dougherty. I got the same email, same pictures, that it's not acceptable. It, it's just not acceptable. How long did they have to have that sandwich shi- sitting on some shelf for it to be moldy and they're gonna, and they, and they give that to our kids?
Okay, we'll have someone at the next meeting. Thank you. All right, Mr. Martin?
So our next item is nine two, the memorandum of agreement with UTL related to advisor stipends. Primarily, these are positions at the high school, and this is a, a one-year renewal of the current stipends paid to these individuals, again, only for one year. So I don't know if there are any questions from the floor or a motion to approve. Motion by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. Lay. Roll call. Oh, I'm sorry, no, Mike, I didn't see it. Mr. Dillon with a question. I apologize.
Thank you. No, I didn't have necessarily a question. I did want to just mention the unified basketball program is, it's probably, it's one of the best things we got going in the sports program right now with our special ed population and basketball players helping out with that. Check out a unified basketball game when you get a chance. I'd also like to mention that our coaching salaries, while we're talking about advisors and, and positions here, our coaching salaries need adjustment, and they haven't been touched in approximately a decade, but I would make a motion to approve as is. Thanks.
So we already have a motion and a second, but.
Second.
We, okay, so we can replace Mr. Lay with Mr. Dillon?
No, just, what do you, what, just do it however it needs to be done. It's fine. Go ahead.
Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota? Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy? Five As to ass- approved.
All right. Budget transfer. Mr. Superintendent, nine three?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The budget transfers for the committee for this meeting are within your packet. Ms. Turner, can you provide a summary for the committee? The recommendations approval as written.
Sure.
Ms. Turner?
There are three, I mean, I'm sorry, there are five transfers, three of which are just transfers when the schools elect to move money from one account to another. As you know, they build, they, they get an allocation in the spring, but if they had extra money at the end of the year, they're able to pre-purchase certain things, so if now they find that they don't need to buy office supplies, they may move it to PD and/or technology, things like that. The last two of the five trends, transfer requests that are there represent the afternoon in the arts program or musical program. The afternoon in the arts program, when we elected to convert the band teachers to an afternoon in the arts program, the budget for the program hadn't been, well, it had been established when Mr. Vissow presented it, but the accounts had never existed in Munis, so we had to create the technical accounts before we could move money into those accounts. So we put it into a temporary holding line until the accounts were created, then we moved it. On the final, the fifth transfer is one where we had Monday Night Football, and a couple of years ago, we had cut that program. Now that Mr. Vissow is expanding the arts program, she asked for that to be reinstated, so we moved funds into that account.
Any questions on the budget? Ms. Clark move for approval?
Move for approval.
Seconded by Mr. Dillon. Roll call.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Seven As approved.
All right, nine four, appointment to the Lowell telecommunications board. Motion to appoint Ms. Jan Myers of Lowell to the telecommunications board. Any questions? No. Move approval by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. Lay. Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay? Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Seven As approved.
Ms. Myers is here.
Would you like to come up and say a couple of words?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for not, uh, not voting against me. No, I'm, I'm pleased to be, being appointed to the LTC board and to be with Lowell Public Schools now, and look forward to representing the district.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Myers is new to us, as many of you know, but certainly not new to our community, and she's been doing a commendable job. So thank you, Ms. Myers, on behalf of the committee, on behalf of the district. Warm welcome to you, to Lowell Public Schools, and congratulations on your latest appointment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Convention and conference requests. Lowell High trip to Denver, Colorado. Permission for athletic director David Linskey to attend the National Athletic Conference to be held December 10th, 2021 through December 15th, 2021, Denver, Colorado. There is no cost to Lowell Public Schools. Mr. Linskey will cover all associated expenses. Any questions? Mr. Dillon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Boyd, is that typical across the district that we're sending someone on a conference fully paid for by themselves?
It, it's not typical. It's not typical. That was the request in this instance. Certainly, if the committee would like to take a different approach, I can bring it back to Mr. Linskey. He submitted it with this request on his own behalf, and it was provided to the committee, routed to the committee on his behalf, but no, Mr. Dillon typically, professional development does have a, a consideration of reimbursement from the committee.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, the, yeah, the request is fine. It just seems that it may not, I don't know, it might not be consistent. Can we look into that and see if there's, I mean, if, if it's a worthy event to be attended, and if we typically will pay some of the expenses, then I, I think that's something that we should look into.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon. Yes, I would, I would recommend approval as written, and I'll certainly bring back, I don't think any employee would be opposed to an additional benefit, but I don't want to delay his registration either, so I'll certainly bring it back. Thank you, Mr. Dillon. I think he would appreciate that opportunity to have it considered.
Yeah, I'd be willing to approve as is. If you look into it further, that'd be great. Thank you.
Questions? Motion by Mr. Dillon to approve, seconded by Ms. Clark. Roll call.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Seven As approved.
Communications, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. These are the requested communications from the committee. They're all provided in your packet as requested.
Thank you. Any questions on any three, the budget breakdown, district-wide chart, communication from law department? Ms. Dougherty? Yeah, Ms. Dougherty? Yep.
So we have got communications and the org chart, right?
Yeah, any three. Any ques- questions on any three of them?
So with the community solicitor and city solicitor, what is our next step in responding to this?
I believe the committee has requested guidance from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. I plan to communicate with that request to the Massachusetts School Association of School Committees at the, my earliest opportunity. That would be the immediate next step. And concerns about exploring the Massachusetts contracts, right? Yeah, so there's two different conversations. So a conversation about contracts does not relate to a conversation about the organizational chart. So it would not be within the purview of the solicitor to reorganize the district. So the question. So the communication, so the communication, I'm gonna await guidance from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees as per the committee's request, and then I'll provide a follow-up recommendation once I have that information. The authority of the school committee to contract, period. So what positions does the committee have the authority to contract with? That authorization of the committee gives you the understanding of what your authority is as a committee legally. From there, you can provide me recommendations as to how you want to utilize that authority.
Just push your button on. Is your light ring?
So regarding the other piece, the concerns regarding one particular contract as to form that we had asked for guidance on, are we gonna be making any steps in response to that, a meeting or whatever? What is the plan with that part of the communication?
So I'm gonna retain the right to negotiate in private with our employees. That relates to negotiations with an individual employee. I will provide certainly the guidance that's received that was requested by the committee. I'll also provide to you any outcome of private negotiations, but we negotiate in private on all of our contracts, whether with our bargaining units or individual employees.
Okay. And then, can we move on to the organizational chart?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I appreciate getting the organizational chart. I still was not able to read it, so I, I figured out a way to blow it up a little bit bigger, and I think I, I represented that I had some concerns about the chart. When Dr. Boyd joined the district two years ago, we made some pretty big changes. We went from three assistant superintendents to five with the title change chief, which now we're hearing from the city solicitor that we should revert back to the assistant superintendent title change, which I, I think that's a good recommendation. But my concern, even at the time, and I think in hindsight, and, and some of my colleagues were not on the committee at that time, because that was in July of two years ago, but to just kind of give you that hindsight perspective I'm looking at. But my concern even at the time, and I think in hindsight, and, and some of my colleagues were not on the committee at that time, because that was in July of two years ago. Um, but to just kind of give you that, uh, hindsight perspective I'm looking at, perhaps it was too soon to make such a big change. Dr. Boyd had just joined the district. Um, and of course, I, I, I'm not saying necessarily to break the, it, from going from three assistant superintendents to five, but my concern at the time, and I, I think it's really worn out to be true, is the, the delivery of our student services to our students, that we have, uh, broken it up, and I actually, I made copies. If you want to pass this over. Just to give you an idea, I'm, I'm looking for a more expanded org chart. This is, um, well, I just, we later. And I have one for you. I can give you the original. And I like this to be entered into as, you know, part of the record of tonight's meeting, that we look at, if, if we could have an organizational chart from Dr. Boyd that gives us the kind of details. If you look on student support services, because that is the one I'm most concerned with, I'll, I'll give you this one.
And I just want to say that, like, from my research on this too, um, I just want to make sure we're cautious with, you know, we set policy, we hire the superintendent.
Right. I, and I have no, I, I understand. I'm not making any, I'm not suggesting that we make a change tonight. I'm asking Dr. Boyd to review the changes that have been made with my concerns in mind and come back to us
Okay.
with, um, maybe suggested changes, maybe not. I'm not telling him how to do it, but I wanted my colleagues, if you look under student, we used to have all student services together, right? It was under, uh, Janine Durkin before she became the interim. And if you look at that page, and then you look at the org chart that we currently have, which this is a bigger one, Ms. Martin, that might help you. So what I did was I looked under the current organizational chart, and, and Dr. Boyd, I'd be happy to share my thoughts with you later if you want, and I have this written up. And I start the things that were all under student support services that now have been broken up in pieces, um, across different, um, chiefs. And, and I, and I'll give you just an example of, you know, there was a reasoning behind having all student support services under one umbrella. And I think that collaboration between people, but if you look under, um, the count, we used to have under, um, Janine Durkin, we had council for student support, right, and we had two lawyers, that we still have those two lawyers in the system that work the legal aspect with our students. But I couldn't find where they were. I think one of them might be under Chief Operating Officer, but I don't know where the other one is in the current organizational chart.
Legal Services Reports to our Chief Operating Officer. I believe that function is identified as Legal Services under the Chief Operating Officer.
So legal ser- so Labor Council, no, not Labor Council. It's a-
Legal Services, yes.
I don't see Legal Services under Chief Operating Officer on this org chart. I see Labor Council, I see Collective Bargaining and Labor Relations. So I'm just looking for something that really provides us the information of how the organization is organized in a way that makes sure that we're working efficiently together and we're pri- providing the services to our students and our families in a way that makes sense. So the, the Council for Student Support, that one I couldn't find. And then look at the issues around dropout prevention, adult education, right? So we have dropout prevention, adult education, um, comes under the Chief Academic Officer right now. That used to be under Student Services. Data and Performance, which is really about attendance, court referral, interventions around tru- truancy, that comes under the Chief Schools Officer. With three, truancy prevention, I'm not sure what that is, that comes under Chief Equity Engagement Officer. So part of what happened with the contract that we're looking at for one of our chiefs that the city solicitor has responded to with a number of concerns, I think was there hasn't been a, a balance between all the, the different roles, that maybe it needs to be recalibrate, recalibrated. Um, and that, again, looking at putting the student services pieces together, because those are the people that are working in concert. You know, you've got your teammate who's, you know, working with, let's say even, um, adult education. Well, that's a lot of our families, right? Our parents are in adult education, so that would maybe be better off with that bucket of student services. So I, I would like to make a motion, actually, it's got two parts to it. I, I think that we should, um, ask Dr. Boyd to reexamine the organizational chart and come back to us with some suggestions of how he thinks it might be improved now that he's been in the role for two years, now that we've, he's been able to work with our staff across the district and see, you know, how, how things have changed, how, you know, where there might be improvements in the organizational chart. So that would be the first part. The second part is I think that we need to, uh, uh, look at the chief contracts and make sure that we do have a title that is recognized by DESI, such as Assistant Superintendent, and that all the assistant superintendents have the required licensures that the state mandates. Um, and I think that this, these two things, this is a perfect time to do this, to look at the organization, make some suggestions for us about ways we can streamline, be more efficient, put like people working in like roles, look at the balancing, um, of the responsibilities, and, as I said, recalibrate. So I know that's a very long motion. Do you want me to shorten it into this two things?
No, go ahead.
No?
No, you don't have to shorten it. So the motion to take a look at the reorg chart.
Look at the reorg chart, look at changing the titles back to the Assistant Superintendent, uh, with the required licensures to go with that. I make that in the form of the motion.
Is there a second on the motion?
Can I, can we talk first before we?
Do I have a second?
Yeah, second by Ms. Martin. Mr. Lay, go ahead.
She's got a second already?
Yeah, go ahead. Second, right, yeah.
First time seeing this org chart, uh, uh, it looked like you put a lot of time, uh, in, into, into this.
That is the organizational chart we had two years ago.
Yeah.
That is the, that is the original organizational chart from two thousand nineteen.
Right.
No, I'm, I'm, and, and you, you mentioned the, the city solicitor a couple of times, uh, and I'm wondering, did she, uh, did you work with her to, 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 to get this?
I mentioned-
That's the original, that's the organizational chart before Dr. Boyd got here.
The city solicitor had nothing to do with the organizational chart. I'm mentioning her communication.
No, I got it, I got it. That's the chart from two years ago, Donna.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you have a question or?
And, uh, no, and, um, for me, I, I feel that what, um, my colleague, uh, Ms. Dougherty, uh, insinuating is we, we try to tell Dr. Boyd, the superintendent, what to do. And I feel that, uh, that is a little bit, uh, it, it is inappropriate. Uh, I mean, I, I, I use the wrong word. You, you may want to do it, but I'm not supporting that. Because I don't think it's rightful, it is our duty to, to do that. Micro management, the superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dillon?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would the maker of the motion be amenable to, um, just telling us what she's looking for as a result of Dr. Boyd's search and saving us a lot of time?
Yeah, go ahead. I-
I thought I was pretty clear. I want to have a sense that the student services activities are happening for our kids. I think that we have diluted student services by breaking it into pieces, and I have, you know, other places there, but I didn't want to-
Why don't you just put forward a recommendation then, and we'll talk about it in the next meeting?
Well, I want to-
You can't put forward a recommendation, you just ask for the motion, so.
All right, but that's what it sounds like. I mean, we could save time by doing this. It, it seems like she's been trying to dig at this for a long time, and I don't know, just tell us what you think should be changed, and that might make things easier, I guess. That's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah. Ms. Clark?
Thank you. Um, I agree. I feel like there are some ideas that Ms. Dougherty has that she maybe would like. I, I think the, the superintendent and team have brought forward recommendations on way that, that they see possible improvements. And again, I'm gonna go back to the example we spoke about earlier. We, as a school committee, have not supported, uh, those ideas. So I, um, not in all cases, but I, I, I think there are some ideas that are out there that would in fact improve, uh, the student's success and student experience. Um, I have not heard feedback that these, uh, areas are siloed, and I, this organizational chart, as I'm looking at it, makes a lot of good sense to me. I mean, truancy prevention is different from, uh, chasing students who have, uh, dropped out or are already, um, you know, major, having major issues. So I, I, uh, I agree with my colleagues. I think that it sounds like there's something more to this motion that's really not, uh, as it seems on a face value, and I, I am also curious, um, where this is coming from, but I agree, I, I would not support it. I think, I think I, good ideas have been brought forward, and I, I think they're, they're worth talking about. Um, but I did not hear that, um, making the chart look like it did two years ago was one of those ideas, and, and I don't know why. I think that's out of our purview as well to identify what the organizational chart would look like. Um, so I will not support this motion.
Okay. Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you. I just want to clarify for my colleague. Um, I think that we are all aware that there was some, some sort of imbalance, uh, in the workload, or there would not have been six votes to incorporate an amended contract for chief that's now come back with issues from the city solicitor. I did not support that change, but I recognize that as there's, uh, there's an imbalance in the organizational chart. We need to look at it again, and I'm, I'm looking for Dr. Boyd's guidance on, after two years of being in the district, are there some suggestions? My concern primarily has been about the student services supports, but I think when we are a district that we talk about equity, that means equity at all levels, right?
Can I just clarify though, because imbalance, different work has different, there's different responsibilities. So I know from my experience at the university, we have a, uh, an Associate Vice Chancellor for University Relations, for example, or University Advancement. Those are two smaller areas compared to the, uh, Vice Chancellor for, um, Administration and Finance. It's just because there's, it's just a difference in, in the type of work that falls in that area. So I'm, I'm confused about what do you mean by imbalance? I mean, there's work that clearly goes across, and each of these chief titles, along with the areas that fall under them, seem to be appropriate. And I appreciate the additional detail of, of the recommendations from two years ago when this was approved, the details behind it and the thinking behind it. And I read it, and I understand what it means. I'm, so I'm confused what imbalance, what you mean by imbalance.
Okay. All right. So the motion is made to take a look at the organizational chart, come back with, uh, any related suggestions on, uh, on responsibilities. Is that correct? No, go ahead.
And, and the second piece of it is to revert back to the title of Assistant Superintendent and require that all people at that level have the state mandated licensures.
Okay. Do you have all that? Okay, all right. So roll call? What's that?
Can you tell me what, what we're voting on?
Voting on, she made a motion to take a, uh, to bring the organizational chart back to Dr. Boyd to take a look at-
Take a look at it.
For suggestions, and the second part is to, uh, suggest maybe we go back to regular school titles as far as-
Assistant Superintendent titles with the required licensures.
That are recognized by DESI and have appropriate licensure for that title.
But didn't we already, aren't we already getting a report on that from MASC regarding the titles? Wasn't that part of the package of what we had requested the superintendent to investigate?
Sure, Dr. Boyd, we did.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I will be getting guidance from MASC. I think also should be recognized, DESI just went through a reorganization. They're using titles such as we currently have now, so they just went to chief, chief titles at DESI themselves with their current reorganization. Uh, MASC will provide the committee with guidance on contract authorization, that the committee has, what authorization does the committee have to provide contracts to individually represented or non-affiliated employees? I'm gonna get that from MASC. Uh, so I'm awaiting that guidance from MASC. I'll make that request.
But it's about the specific titles that can have contracts.
Right.
So I mean, I think it's-
Some, some parts.
She's just asking for a motion. We're gonna vote on the motion. Just everybody voted up or down.
Do you think I should, do you want me to split the motion? I didn't realize, we could just talk on the organizational piece. Give us recommendations for the organizational piece.
Just do the motion and recommend-
If we're gonna, are we gonna wait for MASC? Is that what you're saying?
Why do we keep talking about the MASC portion?
Right.
This is executive session discussion that we're bringing into the chambers.
Wipe that out. We'll talk on just revoting for the suggestions-
Am I wrong?
Organizational chart. All right?
Can I get confirmation? Am I wrong?
We're gonna vote just on-
That this is material that we shouldn't be discussing in the chambers?
No, it was, she was just-
I think I'm right.
No, we were just talking about something else.
No, we can talk about it.
So, all right. So your motion now is just to vote on taking a look at the organizational chart and coming back with suggestions.
And we'll wait on the-
Wait on the other-
Uh, the other information about contracts and titles.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quick question, uh, to the superintendent. Do you understand what she's looking for?
I think I can answer this easily. I'm not gonna be providing no recommendation under a reorganization. The goal here is stability for the school district. We're not gonna destabilize the district. My quick, quick recommendation, there's not a recommendation to reorganize the school district. If this committee wants that under a formal guise of a formal memo stating such, I can do that. Uh, but this, this school district, like other districts around the country, are in desperate need of stability. We are gonna be working to stabilize this district. A reorganization is a significant amount of change.
I mean, uh, can, can I continue, please? I mean, there were so many other issues that we have to be dealing with over these last fifteen months of lost education, and we're gonna be focusing on an organizational chart. I, I, I think that's, uh, really not using our staff appropriately. They should be working on trying to figure out better ways of approaching all of the, all that was lost over the last fifteen months. That's my priority. That's where, where we should be all focused. That's where central office should be focused. That's where all our teachers, all our parents should be focused, our kids, not a chart, our kids. Thank you.
And I agree, but I just think that her approach is, is reaching those goals through the organizational chart. The motion's made. If you agree, vote for it. If you don't, vote against it. So roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
No.
Mr. Dakota?
No.
Mr. Dillon?
No.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
No.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Three yeas, four neys, app, fails.
All right. Uh, anything else? Motion, yep.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make, uh, the announcement that coats from and above, the organization that Larry, brothers Larry Finn and Eric Finn both use to, I mean, they, they clothe, uh, a significant amount of our Lowell Public Schools population and, uh, the homeless and anybody else who's in need in the city every single year. They collect, uh, I mean, a th- a couple thousand coats, I think, the la- last year, um, plus donations. The event is going on tomorrow night, Thursday night, uh, at Cobblestones, starting at six P.M., um, and at the Blue Shamrock also. Uh, Eric Finn will be at the Blue Shamrock, Larry Finn at Cobblestones. Show up with a, uh, new or gently-used coat, or as many coats as you can supply, and have a good time supporting a good cause. I wanted to make sure that was out there. Thank you.
Thank you. I just need a motion to accept the communications, eleven one to eleven three. Motion by Mr. Dillon, seconded by Ms. Clark. All in favor, say aye. Motion adjourned by Ms. Lay, seconded by Mr. Dillon. Thank you.
Are we going back into the second section?
Oh, yeah, yeah. We gotta go-